...who are present and in place. Mr. Darby is on the way in. Ms. Honeycutt, I believe, may be online or not.
She is.
She is online. All right. Very well. We did have on the agenda a special finance committee meeting that my understanding is that it is to be deferred, right?
In light of Ms. Honeycutt's presence, I'd like to move it forward. The reason was just simply because she was not going to be able to make the meeting.
Ms. Honeycutt, are you able to unmute and speak?
Yes, sir.
All right. Very well. Okay. We call this meeting our Special Finance Committee to order. All members of council are a part of this meeting. Item number one, the oath of office for boards and commission.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Boykin.
Ms. Chair, I would move to direct all boards and commission members who are directly appointed by Charleston County Council to take the oath of office found in Article Six, Section Five of the South Carolina Constitution before October 31st of 2025, and that the clerk of council complete a record of the oaths from each board and commission member. Failure to complete the oath may result in removal from office pursuant to Rule Five of the Rules of Council. I further direct the clerk of council and county attorney to review the code of ordinances and provide recommendations for council review of any provisions or actions inconsistent with this directive.
Second. It properly moved and seconded. Let us have a roll call vote. Mr. Wareman down here.
Mr. Wareman.
Chairman, I'd like a quick discussion.
Yes.
You know, I mean, at the very least, maybe a motion first. I mean, this just was put onto the agenda last evening. You know, I know there are a lot of folks in the community who feel very strongly about it. And I would ask that we get this deferred to August. I mean, my understanding is, you know, up until about five minutes ago, that was what we were going to be doing. So I'd make a motion to defer this until the next meeting.
All right. We do have a motion on the floor. The motion to defer, Madam Attorney, I believe supersedes the motion that's on the floor.
That is correct.
All right. So there has been a motion entered by Mr. Wareman to defer. Is there a second?
I'll second it if it's got to be first.
All right. Probably moved and seconded. Let us have a roll call vote on the motion to defer.
Mr. Boykin?
Nay.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Nay.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Nay.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Nay.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion to defer fails with a vote of four ayes and five nays.
All right. We return to the original motion.
Move to call the question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Wareman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with, one, two, three, four, six ayes and two nays. I'm sorry, seven ayes and two nays.
All right. We'll move to our public hearings. One A, ZDA dash zero three dash two five dash zero zero one zero three, and ZREZ dash zero three dash two five dash zero zero one five eight. Orange Hill Development Agreement and Plan Development, second public hearing.
Do you have any speakers?
Anyone signed up to speak?
We do. We have two people signed up. Anthony Bryant and Mike McShane.
Thanks for Facebook Live. The reason why I'm here is because when we talk about zoning and development, we get something called power and the scarcity of power within our community. And so as we build Boeing and all these other developments, they take our power. And Dominion Energy decided a request for approval pilot demand program, site management program, docking number two zero two five one seventy three E, many energy officer regulatory staff, Department of Suma Affairs, Home Services Commission. And my concern is the fact that Dominion Energy may not be compliant with our seniors and their billing. And how do I know that? My own mother. So Cheeto Walker and the sheriff and others had come to the conclusion, operating in bad faith, that my mother's joint account. And so therefore, I'm looking at one to five years in prison sitting here. Not before you, but since that's the case, my mother had to do with this. This has to do with my mother. So I want to give Mr. Watson the information to talk to Dominion Energy on behalf of so many of our seniors, with Dominion Energy and everybody else, and the public utility person to Dominion Energy to show that our senior citizens are not being robbed by them. Or their children are not on a joint account, may go to jail for one to five years, in my opposition to so many people. And I believe that my mother was used actually for me being here to put me in jail. So I want to make sure that Mr. Watson gets that, Dr. Cheeto Walker and others, because I am an object of a lot of stuff in this building. You know, the feds, you, the church, the synagogue. And guess what? You can be in the opposition to everything in this country and still be a citizen. You don't have to be in a firm of nothing in this country. This country is based on dissent. And being a black man in America, my freedom came from dissent.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike McShane. I'm a resident of 1501 Ravens Point Road on Johns Island. I'm here this evening, Mr. Chairman, representing the Johns Island Task Force. Task Force is a collection of conservation interests, including landowners on the island like myself. We're here to comment and actually support the applicant's request for the rezoning and the development agreement. The applicant really, in my view, set a new template. They were very solicitous of having input from your, from neighbors, landowners, and community groups. They were, they took the density from 181 to 120. They were very supportive of the tree mitigation, where you would limit the mitigation that would, that can't be done exactly on the property, but to limit it to be done on the island itself. They're looking at a preservation tract that we would prefer a conservation easement over a deed restriction, but all the way would be a preservation tract. And that they moved the entrance, the primary entrance, over to the river roadside. So for that part, we are appreciative of the fact that the applicant and their agent were very solicitous of that input from the task force. Therefore, the task force submits its support for the application. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you so much. One B, ZLDR dash zero one dash two five dash zero zero one three three, Parkers Ferry Overlay Text Amendments. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any one second. We need to hold up here. So this is a request to amend Table 5.12.5, the Parkers Ferry Overlay Zoning District Use Table, to add vehicle storage as in allow use for the business service nodes and commercial properties with special exception, in accordance with special exception procedures of the ZLDR. This table shows the proposed use of the vehicle storage added with special exception approval. And this slide shows the special exception approval criteria of the ZLDR, Section 3.6.5. Now, the Parkers Ferry Overlay was adopted in 2017, and development of the overlay district included working closely with community members and stakeholders, who felt that residential densities should remain low and new development should respect, should respect the existing land use pattern, which is largely rural with historically and culturally significant properties. However, they recognized the need for employment opportunities and wanted to allow businesses, but limit the scale and scope to remain consistent with existing development. The overlay includes a residential area as well as business service nodes and commercial properties. Allow uses within the residential area include single-family detached housing by right and some other low-intensity recreational civic and institutional uses, allowed either conditionally or through the special exception process. The business service nodes and commercial properties allow for more intense office and commercial uses, such as healthcare uses, animal services, administrative and professional offices, and retail sales. Higher intensity uses, such as gas stations and resource extraction, require approval through the special exception process. Now, properties within the business service nodes and commercial properties are primarily located off arterial roads throughout the Parkers Ferry area, including Savannah Highway, Old Jacksonboro Road, and Highway 174. This slide shows some allowed uses within the business service nodes and commercial properties, including agricultural sales or services, medical office, food sales, and retail sales. And then the other more intense uses can be allowed conditionally or by special exception approval by the BZA. The applicant provided responses to all approval criteria. And then this application was heard at the March 10th Planning Commission meeting, where the commission voted to defer the application, allowing the applicant an opportunity to meet with the community to discuss his proposed request and address the community's concerns. And he did provide a letter prior to the June 9th Planning Commission meeting detailing his community outreach. And then at the June 9th PC meeting, the commission recommended approval of the proposed amendment to allow vehicle storage uses, if approved through special exception procedures of the ZLDR, with the condition that such uses business service nodes and commercial properties that have rented on Highway 17, South Savannah Highway. This slide shows public input received for the March 10th and June 9th PC meetings and prior to tonight's public hearing. And then this request was noticed as required. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any person signed up to speak?
We do. We have four people. Mr. Bryant, then Emily Whiting.
I'm gonna get a little deeper. I served in the BZA for years. I remember Uniform Development Ordinance was down in the 90s. Teddy, you just had gotten in, I believe. And they inherited, I'm gonna tell you what, Teddy them inherited all his problems when they came in the door. Henry did too. And when they came in the door, they'll tell you, they inherited some stuff. And people come in here now, and they reactionary to what they inherited, which was overlay districts. Mount Pleasant was able to overlay their districts to the point where there's no black folks. Okay, the overlay district, it's a term, overlay district means anti-black, right? I must go be real. It's empirical. Since I'm, I'm in opposition to the Attorney General, opposition to Cheeto Walker, opposition to everybody. Let's be real. I was in 1990s governing this building down on Broad Street, and it looked really diverse. But there were elements in the Chamber of Commerce who controlled every bank account, South State Bank, Bank of America, whoever. And they say they don't, they're not a special interest group. And they don't control, you look at the developers and UDO Beach Company, Brumley, all them in the 90s. They controlled Daniels Island, Guggenheim Foundation then. So I've been an option to that, to State Force Authority with Kane Hoyden. Everybody here now reacting to a dead county. The county is dead and been dead since 1994.
Emily Whiting, followed by Jonathan Whiting.
I'm Emily Whiting, and I live in the overlay zoning district. And there was some concern by the zoning board about the aesthetics of what the applicant planned to do with his property. And I fully support him being able to use it for the vehicle storage that he wishes. I took some pictures and gave them to the clerk, who will email them to you, of the properties next to his. And there is a, you'll see, a double-wide trailer, a metal building that calls itself a church, and Tower Tire, which is not very aesthetically pleasing. And the applicant said he wishes, oh, it would be attractive.
Ma'am, you can stay.
All right. Well, the applicant said that he planned to put up a decent-looking fence and a few bushes. And if he did so, it'd be the most attractive property in the area. Thank you.
Jonathan Whiting, followed by Carson Lanau.
Jonathan Whiting, 5594 Highway 174. The zoning board had a lot of people questioning the use of this property. In fact, several of them had said that they were concerned about this being an eyesore. But yet, this boatyard, RV storage yard, that this person wants to start his business on, is 150 feet from Tower Tire, which is basically a junkyard that just happens to sell tires. Okay, so that shows a very lack of disconnect in the community of the zoning board. So I think that we need to allow this person, who wants to start a legitimate business, is going to provide a service to the community. Let this guy have his boatyard and start his business up and provide a service to the community. Thank you.
Is there someone else?
Carson Lanu, followed by Ophelia Williams.
All right.
Good evening, all. I am Carson Lanu, son of the applicant, Chris Lanu, and I'll be representing him today. So I, the purpose of me coming up here is basically to give you a little bit more information on the business that we're trying to build on the plot of land, and clear some concerns that the community has had. So just a little bit more information is Imperial RV and Boat Storage is the name of the business that will be there. It's off of Highway 17 in Ravenel, right next to Tower Tire. So just a little bit more information on it is 25 parking spaces is what's going to be there. So ranging from 40 feet by eight foot to 20 foot by eight foot. Accommodates a range of sizes for RVs and boat storage for the community. Some concerns that the community has had was oil changes. So we will allow no fluid changes, fluid changes on site. So no oil changes whatsoever. We also want to address that we will be building a slatted fence around the site. So that will be well lit. There'll be video surveillance, and it'll be safe for tenants. Another concern was, will this impede traffic? No. There is a section for tenants to pull off to the side of the road and enter into the site without obstructing traffic. So that clears that concern. And we will do our best to accommodate to not make it an eyesore like the last speaker spoke. And just to put a little bit more out there, it is an acre of land, and it's near five active boat landings within 14 miles and three active campgrounds. So just to sum it all up, we have a great amount of respect for the community, and we're hoping to gain permission to proceed with the development. Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you.
Ophelia Williams.
Good evening. I am Ophelia E. Williams, resident of Wilt Town Community Center. And I have some of our resident members stand for me, please. And the applicant did come out to us several months ago, and we do not object. We support him with his business. We wish him well, and he will stay in contact with us. Thank you.
That's all for this public hearing.
All right. Thank you so much. Public comments?
Yes, sir. Anthony Bryant, followed by Betty Shay.
Please state your name and your address, and you will have two minutes to address council.
Anthony Bryant, 2123 Cortland Avenue, 29403. Medicaid and Medicare had $14 billion in fraud. I filed a complaint regarding Medicaid and Medicare fraud. My mother was placed in Roper St. Francis Hospital with blood clots in her leg and heart. She had, she had a procedure. Left the procedure, went to Oak Harbor and Mount Pleasant. My mother, my mother left Oak Harbor with 101 temperature and low blood sugar, low blood pressure. I had to drive her from Mount Pleasant across to her home downtown Charleston. Had to call firemen. Firemen came in, put her in the house for home health. Then, guess what happened? EMS came, told me, guess what? Get her to the hospital, she'll be dead. So Cheeto Walker then comes to my, comes to my father's property, because I file these complaints about my mother, who gave my brother's life, who raised us in that home, who started my first two businesses out of her pocket and my dad. I go to banking, I ain't Tim Scott, I don't have one of them stories. Or Mayor Burdys, my daddy took care of his children. So I don't have that kind of story. I don't have a story of no story of my father being a bad man, or my grandmama, granddaddy. I had a great life, great story, great people, really no hardship, private school, best clothes, best everything. And she'd have died in my arms. Right? So I'm, I'm the blame in that. Roper St. Francis got $14 billion of Medicaid fraud, who vulnerable adults were abused in this country by criminals with PhDs, BAs, BH, PSDs, and law degrees. Robbed the country, robbed powerful people who, who, who put their life and their time in. Politics really gotten bad with your mama on the table. I say a lot about people, and I will always say, my mother told me, stand for what I believe in regardless of who says anything. But tell Tim Scott, I ain't got no bad daddy stories.
Betty Shay, followed by Carlton Walker.
Good evening. Betty C., 2413 Eagle Drive, North Charleston, 9406. Good evening. I am the president, and I am here on behalf of the Millen Park Stall Road Civic Group to share my deep concerns concerning, regarding the lack of consistent support from Charleston County government entities, particularly the code enforcement department. While we are, while we often receive initial responses to our concerns, we find there is little follow-through or clarity on how to bring noncompliant properties into compliance. The procedures shared are often ambiguous, leaving residents unsure of how to proceed. This creates ongoing frustrations, especially for those of us who are actively working to maintain safe, clean, and orderly neighborhoods. In addition to code enforcement issues, we are experiencing a gross amount of traffic problems in our area. Speeding continues to be a major hazard, and we are regularly plagued by 18-wheelers unlawfully traveling through our residential streets despite signage clearly prohibiting through trucks. These issues are not only disruptive, but pose a danger to our families and children. We are grateful that Lieutenant James from the County Traffic Patrol is now attending our monthly meetings to address these concerns. And we sincerely appreciate his effort. However, we are seeking more than participation. We are looking for solutions. We need sustained engagement and real action from county departments to bring about the changes we've long been advocating for. Our community is not standing by adly. We're working, we're organizing, and we care deeply, but we can't do it alone. We respectfully ask this council to help us bring accountability and resolution to the ongoing issues we raise. Thank you for your time. We, we meet at 2429 Millen Park Road, the third Tuesday, at 6:30. Thank you.
Is there a list of these type buildings that we have received, or is this just a general statement?
I've asked Carter in the past. He's been used to tend those things, to try to address some of these things, but it's like a donut hole. North Charleston, the county, and the state. And we have been trying to get the state to do things with the road and stop, you know, the big trucks from coming through, and lower the speed limits, which they refuse to do. And, you know, we can't just let, you're not allowed to go out and change the speed limit or put speed bumps without the state's permission. And so this has been an ongoing problem. She is right. I've addressed this before when I was the chair, and Mr. Carter has been out there trying to do things, but the state refuses to do what they're supposed to do. Now, the code enforcement issue, I would like for somebody to look into that, because, you know, we do the unincorporated area, but I thought we gave some of that over to North Charleston to, you know, under IGA. Is that correct, Mr. Administrator? I think we gave that to IGA, so that way they all could come into compliance. So I would like a follow-up on that, and somebody can report back to me and then report to her. But where's Carter? Is Carter still there? He might be in his office. I'll get with Carter on tomorrow, and ask him to reach out to you and get that list what you just sent out.
And also, Ms. Worster is going to get your information for me so that we can follow up.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The next person?
Carlton Walker, followed by Phil Lowry.
Thank you. I'm Carlton Walker, 8784 Auburn Drive. I was just coming to tell you guys a story about the current sheriff we have. I want to thank Carl Ritchie. We have a situation on James Island where this elderly lady, African-American, 93, her roof's really bad. She's got bedbugs in her house. And the sheriff's department was called on the condition. And Sheriff Carl Ritchie has the Adopt the Community program, and Captain Ali instead. This could have been a situation where the lady was displaced from her house and taken away, but Carl Ritchie did not have that happen. And so, long story short, Adopt the Community, they reached out to a person, that reached out to me, and we're in the process of getting a roof put on the lady's house. And today, I reached out to Larry Kabrowski, and I sent him the entire story. And if he could share that with you, you all, that'd be great. And he put me in touch with Carter, and Carter bent over backwards to get the permit process done immediately, because as we all can tell, it's raining like crazy, and it's a, it's a desperate situation. So I want to thank Carter for his efforts. And then just now, Herb Sasse came, well, came up to me out here and said, y'all have a critical care thing for roofing and plumbing. So if y'all could, Larry could share that information with you guys. And we need to get this lady's house fixed up. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
And thank Carl Ritchie, because, I mean, what he's doing is incredible.
Phil Lowry, followed by Sam Carroll.
Good evening. Phil Lowry, 1528 Russell Beltway. Lovely to see you all again. Been a minute. So Graham Horstman, Matt Labor, giving you all orders now, it looks like. That's, that's fun. So obviously, I'm here to speak on Elbit, per usual, because nothing has happened, except for they have now transported their first round of howitzers to Israel. So now, we will officially have blood on our hands and blood on your hands. Is that Heinrich Jobb, Larry? You want to speak to that? No? So Elbit Systems of America has a human rights clause on their page. It's quite interesting. "We are committed to respecting human rights and human dignity as outlined in our human rights policy. We comply with all applicable laws pertaining to fair employment, as well as laws pertaining to forced compulsory labor, child labor, unemployment discrimination, human trafficking. We strive to do business only with suppliers, but..." It says they share their commitments, business partners who share our commitment to the high standards of ethical business conduct." So this county council board has decided that Elbit Systems is the defining characteristics of who they're willing to do business with. Fantastic. So over 70,000 Palestinians have been martyred since October of '23. The aid, however minimal, that is being let into Palestine is laced with OxyContin and heroin. Over 25 countries have called for an immediate ceasefire and an end to the displacement of the Palestinian people. And this board continues to do nothing, to allow time to go by, and more Palestinians to suffer and to die. For what? 60 employees? Thanks for your time. Free Palestine.
Sam Carroll, followed by Robert Genrow.
Good evening, council. My name's Sam Carroll. I've been a resident of Charleston for over 20 years, and by consequence, I was also an attendee of the public school system here. I remember as a child going to courses in double-wide trailers, because there was not the capacity for enough classrooms in the full buildings. I remember having special-needs neighbors who routinely came with me to complaints that they cannot keep a teacher here for more than one year because of the abysmal salaries provided. And I would ask the council if they believe that in a state ranked 42nd nationally in education, citizens like myself should have to catch up, or to, sorry, pick up the slack of the flylot that's been awarded to Elbit Systems, which is now, as Phil has said, actively shipping howitzers to Israel. Is the council aware? Yeah. Is the council aware of the underwear or complicit in the sacrifice of two sets of children, one here in Charleston educationally, and the other in Gaza with their lives and bodies? I believe that Elbit Systems has no place here in South Carolina, but at the bare minimum, this council should not be giving tax breaks to a real profiteer in a genocide neighborhood like Elbit. Thank you for your time.
Robert Genrow, followed by Alfred Peeler.
Robert Genrow. Can you give your address?
Yeah, Robert Genrow, 1181 Camden Street, North Charleston. Good evening. I, like many here today, are outraged to hear the news that Israeli arms manufacturer Elbit Systems and Latson recently completed their first shipments of howitzer cannons to Israel. These artillery systems will be used, they have been, to level Palestinian neighborhoods, destroy critical infrastructure, and inflict untold pain and suffering destroy critical infrastructure, and inflict untold pain and suffering on men, women, and disproportionately, children. Israel, according to a wide variety of credible bodies, has been committing a genocide in Gaza over the past twenty-one-plus months. Multiple bodies of the UN, from independent experts, special rapporteurs, and UN special committee have warned that the conflict constitutes a genocide. South Africa's case at the ICJ led to the court's conclusion of a plausible genocide and that actions be taken against it. Amnesty International's Doctors Without Borders, Human Rights Watch, hundreds of the world's top genocide, Holocaust, and legal scholars, uh, and more recently, in the New York Times even, scholars Omer Burtav and Amos Goldberg have characterized Israel's actions as a genocide. You've allowed into our community a company playing an integral role in a world historic, live-streamed atrocity. That will be the shame of the world for generations to come. You allowed millions to be stolen from our schools and libraries to subsidize, to subsidize these war criminals. That compounds the shame. I ask of you now, with all the evidence we have, to shut down Elbit immediately before more damage can be done. Palestinians are dying of starvation, intentional starvation, that Israeli politicians claim is moral. Hundreds of innocents, including children, are being shot dead at food distribution checkpoints. Please take a stand and do your part to stop this. This is our community, you're bloodying. Free Palestine.
Alfred Peeler followed by Christopher Newhart.
Hey, my name is Alfred. I'm at, Alfred Peeler, I'm at 1133 Arthur Drive, and I'm also here to speak about Elbit Systems now that we have confirmation that they have sent their first shipment of howitzers to Israel. Omar Bartav is a Jewish Israeli-American professor of Holocaust studies at Brown University, and I wanna give a quote that he published in the New York Times just last week. He wrote, quote, "My inescapable conclusion has become that Israel is committing genocide against the Palestinian people. Having grown up in a Zionist home, lived the first half of my life in Israel, served in the IDF as a soldier and an officer, and then spent most of my career researching and writing on war crimes and the Holocaust, this was a painful conclusion to reach and one that I resisted as long as I could. But I have been teaching classes on genocide for a quarter of a century, and I know one when I see one," end quote. He goes on to explain about how experts and institutions of international law on genocide across the globe are in agreement, a large and growing number of them. So we can't make the mistake, there is gonna be a day when everybody's gonna pretend like they were against this genocide, just the same way that people pretend that it was obvious to oppose Jim Crow or South African apartheid, but it wasn't always obvious. Nelson Mandela was considered a terrorist by the US government until two thousand eight. And being against a genocide after the fact won't save any lives. We won't let anybody in Charleston forget that members of this body not only did not stand up against this genocide, but instead used their power to financially support Elbit Systems, which is profiting from the genocide, that this body financially incentivized these genocide profiteers into our community, and then remained silent as they shipped weapons of death to erase generations of Palestinians. But it's not too late. Please join the movement to remove Elbit from South Carolina.
Christopher Newhart followed by Autumn Waddell.
Masaeel khair, Chris Newhart, A506 William Mulcher Drive. Al rashi, and I dressed up in the shark of our site. I'm the most meticulous but the last of the shark of our site. What come on and I'll give you a little bit of Arabia. So with all due respect, uh, for everybody, I've been very toss when it comes to saying that the Palestinians were already experiencing a level of apartheid only comparable to Jim Crow in the Warsaw ghettos before the genocide. Checkpoints segregate neighborhoods and are used to harass the population, settlers with the protection of the IDF, routinely raid villages and cities to destroy businesses and lynch Palestinians. Now there are entire families who are disappearing in Gaza. The old, the infant, and the infirm are targeted with high-yield explosive ordinance that wipes out entire city blocks off the map. They're targeting refugee camps with a hundred-five fifty-millimeter shells. They do not care about the hostages. And this is not something we have absolutely no connection to. Y'all not only allowed up Elbit Systems to produce and ship the howitzer cannons used to kill thousands, but you also gave them a fee in lieu of tax agreement. Until Elbit Systems is shut down, y'all are not just an accessory to genocide in Gaza, you are active participants. Of everyone in this city, y'all have the greatest capacity to act. I apologize for the profanity, but the lack of action has me wondering what the actual fuck is wrong with y'all.
Autumn Waddell followed by Bert Morrison.
Hi, I'm Autumn Waddell, um, 509 Rain Song Drive. Um, Elbit's weapons are used to target children, teachers, aid workers, doctors, press, and civilians. This fact is extensively documented. In entering into financial agreements with Elbit and in throwing our public tax dollars at this multi-billion dollar company, you've made all of us responsible for the indiscriminate slaughter of innocent civilians. Your decision and your inaction in correcting this mistake has a very real cost in human lives. Who knows how many teachers, children, aid workers, doctors, and journalists are now going to be slaughtered by the howitzer cannons that were made right here in Charleston County with your stamp of approval? Although it's too late for many, perhaps it's not too late for some if urgent action is taken by this council. I ask that you finally treat this issue with the urgency it deserves. I hope you can find in your heart some compassion and mercy, and show that in your leadership as our elected representatives. Please take action to end the file-out agreement with Elbit and stop allowing war criminals to do business in Charleston County. Can everyone who is here to oppose the presence of Elbit Systems in our community please stand? Thank you.
Bert Morrison followed by, um, first name Brianna, I'm sorry, I can't make out the last name.
Hello, I am Bert Morrison. I live at thirty-eight forty-eight Chestnut Street in Whippur Varney neighborhood in North Charleston, also attend Parkside Presbyterian Church. I just wanted to bring up the ordinance from twenty-twenty-two that used, uh, was signed here. Um, in section two of that ordinance, there's a section that includes the clause, "When the cost to the people surpasses the benefit of the project, then you should reconsider and eliminate the tax cuts." That time of cost to the people is now. In twenty-twenty-two, when this thing was originally signed, there wasn't a war. You may have made that decision. But now, we can all watch the videos, you can go online, and you can see what is happening from the perspective of whoever you want, from the IDF perspective, from the people-they're's perspective. The videos are there, your kids are watching these videos, my kids are watching these videos. We all see the videos. And so if I continue to authorize thousands of dollars every year, hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, we are, you're dragging us into this war. Please do not drag us into the war that we do not wanna be a part of. We will not vote for this again. There are way too many people who are watching the videos. Thank you.
Before you start, if we could restart the clock?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Should I go ahead?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Brianna McGinnis, 2284 Ashley River Road. Um, so I am also here to speak about Elbit Systems. So as many of, um, my neighbors have mentioned, this body-approved bundle of tax incentives, um, that have diverted public resources away from the projects that would benefit that public and into the pockets of a foreign private firm, that is Elbit Systems. Worse, that foreign private firm manufactures the weapons that are being used to maim and kill civilians, like the children, the women, and the old people in Palestine, that all of us have been watching for the last year and a half, being destroyed by exactly the kinds of weapons that Elbit System manufactures. We've all been watching this on our phones. And again, as my neighbor said prior to me, we are going to remember this. So this generous gift, um, that was given from the county to this foreign private war profiteer makes all of us taxpayers, council members, all of us, complicit in the war crimes that those weapons are being used to commit. This council has bestowed a foreign private war profiteer, um, with a, a very, very generous gift. That gift was sold to taxpayers, to your constituents, as a source of good jobs. Good jobs creating the, the weapons that shred toddlers on our phones that we see day after day after day. Are those good jobs? These are jobs that these people are going to have to lie to their grandchildren about. This company and these jobs are a blot on Charleston. They are, it is blood on our hands, and you owe it to your constituents to stop supporting this, this firm, to stop making us complicit in the evil that we are watching helplessly night after night. Thank you.
Elizabeth Roth followed by Kirby Brooks.
Good evening, council. Elizabeth Roth, forty-five Sycamore Avenue. Um, I'm also here with the Elbit Out of South Carolina Coalition, and for over a year, we've been voicing our outrage over Elbit's presence in Charleston County and over this council's direct facilitation and support of a genocidal weapons manufacturer. Uh, we have voiced our dissent both here in council as well as on the street in our pickets. Um, our message is now even more urgent as we have learned, as others have said, that Elbit's first howitzer cannons, which again are, are designed to maim and kill, that's the product they're making, built down the road, have officially, um, departed our area en route to be sent overseas to Israel, and as we know, Israel is actively committing genocide on the Palestinian people as we speak. So now, more than ever, it is a danger and a liability to have ties to this company, especially the financial ties brokered by all of you on this council. War profiteering is, is big business, and maybe that's why you are so attracted to Elbit's initial push to come here, but it is not an economic development strategy that community members would have supported if we had been given the chance. And I've spoken here before and asked you, uh, what Elbit has come back to you with metrics about, you know, what they've accomplished, and to show what their worthwhile investment has been. And the only public data I have seen is their declining quarterly returns as Elbit faces trade embargoes and global outcry against their genocidal profiteering. So we must divest our taxpayer money now from Elbit Systems before, um, any more harm is done. Thank you.
Kirby Brooks followed by Richard Habersham.
Kirby Brooks, fourteen twenty-three Ashley River Road. I'm here to speak on Elbit, a company we have come numerous times here to inform this council, council about. It came out today that eighty-five percent of Palestinians in Gaza have entered the fifth stage of malnutrition, which is often irreversible even if food becomes available in the future. Through this genocide, Israel has murdered at least seventeen thousand children. Children make up about forty-eight percent of the whole population of Gaza. As this council has sat on its hands allowing a company that advertises how lethal its weapons it makes are, that produces eighty percent of Israel's drones that is used to murder Palestinians during this genocide, that set up shop here in the so-called Holy City, signed off by this council to produce howitzer cannons, that as our research has showed, have started shipping them to Israel. You all sat here and did nothing. When those cannons shoot white phosphorus and melt children's bones, that's on all of you. When those cannons maim disabled and murder Palestinian men, women, and children, that is all on you. We provided all of the data, ways to work together to get Elbit out, and you still have time to do the right thing. But as you still have time to do the right thing, I wanna state here that not only do you have blood on all of your hands, you have made us all complicit in this as well, and I want you all to sit with that. As you read the news about all Palestinians that have been martyred in this genocide, you are now complicit in it now too.
Richard Habersham followed by Anna Kimmelblatt.
I'm Richard Habersham, twenty-nine thirty-eight Bennett Charles Road. I got three issues tonight. First, um, I'll give y'all an update on, on the Ruttles' tomb, you know, that, um, this county approved that, that we bought it through the Grand Bell. Um, first, you know, um, we already had the bricks analyzed by Coastal Carolina, then we had, um, a construction engineer came out, uh, construction engineer.
Sorry, Mr. Habersham.
Okay. Came out to look at, um, how we gonna fix the tomb, and then we had, um, um, the University of North Carolina came out to do a ground penetration. Today, we found out that it's not just a tomb, it's a graveyard. We found there's possible five more graves located around this tomb. So the money is being well-spent, and we find out more history about this area than what we did know. So again, thank you all for being a partnership in, you know, this, um, venture. Next, I would thank the council for y'all vote that y'all had last Tuesday on Highway Forty-One, compromise. I know everybody wasn't that pleased, you know, about the compromise, but I think during time, everybody will come and realize that was the right thing to do, you know? It's not just gonna help Philip, they're gonna help that whole corridor. Everybody gonna, gonna be, gonna benefit from that. Um, last, I support, um, the Ten Mile community and their, on their opposition to Graham Homes. You know, the, the rest of Ten, Ten Mile, they became a part of APC to have a voice in the community. And they're not trying to stop development, but they want the development come in the community, just like Philip. We want the, um, development, the, the, to fit in what, how the community look and support the character of the community, not to change the community. So in that, we support the Ten Mile community and the opposition of Graham Homes. Thank you.
Anna Kimmelblatt followed by Chris MD.
Good evening, council. My name is Anna Kimmelblatt, and I serve as the Communities and Transportation Program Director for the Coastal Conservation League located at one thirty-one Spring Street. I'm here tonight to thank Charleston County Council for reaffirming your commitment to the Highway Forty-One Compromise Alternative at Thursday's Finance Committee meeting. This project represents more than eight years of careful planning, extensive community input, and thorough environmental review. While impacting a park is never ideal, the Compromise Alternative achieves a balance between nature and community while also protecting historic communities and providing necessary infrastructure improvements. Given the addition of at least twelve thousand units across the Wando River, finding such a balance is becoming increasingly important, and time is of the essence. The Phillips community has long shouldered the burden of Highway Forty-One, and it is of the utmost importance that we prevent additional impacts to the residents who have called this area home for generations. We appreciate your continued support for this compromise despite recent opposition and misinformation. This integrated solution remains rooted in fact and is the only viable path forward to address improvements on Highway Forty-One that has been presented so far. The Conservation League looks forward to seeing this project advance and provide the necessary traffic relief, safety improvements, and bike-ped infrastructure the area so desperately needs. Thank you for staying the course on this important project.
Chris MD.
Test, test. Council members, I'm Christopher MD. I'm just a quick introduction. I came up here just to introduce myself. I'm new, I'm the new city councilman for District Five, North Charleston. This is my first time attending one of the county meetings, so I just wanted to say thank you for all that you do. Um, in District Five, you'll know, especially Councilman Pryor probably knows, that we have a lot of, uh, property out there that is county. It's, uh, we've got a lot of, um, donut holes out there, so, uh, one of my asks is, if, if you don't mind, if we can talk after this a little bit, like, I wanna kind of align my efforts with not only North Charleston, but with the county. It's good to know, you know, what the upper echelon is doing so that when I can educate some of our residents and things like that. Um, specifically like code enforcement, 'cause that's a major issue where I'm at. Cleaning up the District Five is, I, is one of my major issues. It's probably the first thing and the hardest-hitting thing outside of community events and youth programs. Um, hurricane preparedness, things like that. And then resources, you know, how can I tie into some of those resources that are available to some of those, uh, lower-income neighborhoods? Um, that's all that I have. I appreciate everything. Um, I was a Marine Corps officer for twenty years. I just recently retired about three years ago. Live on Dorchester Road, four seven three eight, um, Federessa Avenue, and, uh, the oath that y'all just did, I think that's awesome. I've been doing that in the Marine Corps for twenty years, so anybody who holds office and is held by the standards of an oath is, uh, I think is a good thing. Um, but that's all that I have, and thanks for your time.
Anyone else?
No, sir, that's all.
All right, we'll have a prayer by Chaplain Roy Gould from the Coastal Crisis Chaplaincy and the pledge by EMS Division Chief Seth Croucher, a member of the current cohort of Emerging Leaders Program.
Would you join me in prayer? Almighty God, I pray for this council meeting tonight. Give each council member wisdom. May every decision be righteous in your side for our benefit and for your glory. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic whose strength stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, just as it is.
The Freedom of Information Act.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notices meeting was posted and agendas were distributed to news media and persons requesting notification.
Item number two, minutes, yes?
May I please request that we move seven F up for Ms. Honeycutt? She's trying to get on her plane, she got just a minute.
We're gonna go right to the minutes of our June twenty-fourth meeting.
Move for approval?
Properly moved.
Second.
And seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. Item three A, Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week.
Move for approval. Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Posers nay, the ayes have it. Let us have the reading of the resolution and Queen Ket is here, so she will come receive it at this time, Mr. Pryor.
All right. I just need to calm down.
A resolution of Charleston County Council proclaiming July twenty-six through August third, 2025 as Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. Whereas Charleston County is one of the oldest counties in South Carolina, and in the eighteenth century, Charleston County and the South Carolina coast became the locale of some of the richest rice plantations in the South, which were linked to specific West African ethnic groups who became known as the Gullah Geechee. And whereas the Gullah Geechee civilization originated in West Africa, its people coming to the United States as slaves to work on rice plantations, specifically in the coastal regions, including South Carolina. And with their African affair, African fare, original language, and craftsmanship, the Gullah Geechee people left their mark on southeastern South Carolina. And whereas the Gullah Geechee culture has had a powerful impact on the Low Country of South Carolina, including Charleston County, and these Gullah Geechee influences have helped to define our southern lifestyle and culture. And whereas the preservation and celebration of the Gullah Geechee culture has gained momentum due to the Gullah Geechee Cultural Heritage Act created by United States Representative James Clyburn, as well as the efforts of others such as Queen Quette, Chieftess of the Gullah Geechee Nation, and Kwame Shaw, co-founders of the International Gullah Geechee Nation Celebration and the Annual Gullah Geechee Nation Music and Movement Festival. And whereas Queen Quette has served as the official head pundit body and spokesperson for Gullah Geechees since July second, two thousand, and whereas the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Gullah Geechee Nation is being celebrated under the theme of twenty-five years of self-determination, celebrating the roots and legacy of Gullah Geechee Nation. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the importance of bringing awareness and appreciation for this rich culture and history in order to increase understanding of all the contributions the Gullah Geechee cultural heritage have given to our area and the sustainability of the Gullah Geechee Nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that Charleston County Council does hereby proclaim the week of July twenty-six through August third, 2025, as Gullah Geechee Nation Appreciation Week in Charleston County, and encourages its citizens to celebrate the Gullah Geechee Nation under the theme Twenty-Five Years of Self-Determination, Celebrating the Roots and Legacy of Gullah Geechee Nation, and Support Gullah Geechee Businesses and Institutions. Charleston County Council, Reverend Dr. Kylan Jerome Middleton, Chairman.
Please, thank you, as always. It's always a pleasure to see you. You know, you're gonna ask you this time. They find some money to give you a phone. You can't spend it.
I can't spend them.
No, can't.
I can't get them, I pray this. I hope they're gold in it.
Oh, you know, gold. I'm gonna have to hesitate to go out and keep it.
It teeth in. We can break for a minute. Or get it.
I thank you so much. We appreciate all you do. It's always good to see you down in this neighborhood. And, you know, thanks for all you do, you know, to preserve history. You know, since this time, so, you know, I'm glad to have a few words.
Appreciate that. Before you be at, could we hit the whole council stand up before we get the photo off? The twenty-fifth anniversary. Do that first. I want y'all to look on Facebook and say, all the other council been in the picture with the queen, what about me?
Those are all closer, I guess.
There we go, balance somehow on that side. We can see you? Can we see it?
Yeah, we're good.
We good?
Ms. Salisbury, come on over.
Ms. Salisbury.
How about that?
How about that?
We're good now. We are good. Uh, brother, take a half step to your left. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. One more again, thank you, thank you, council. Boy, he good to do, I think like that with all the children. And then I see he ready with the boots on the ground to see them. I see you. I see you. So thank you, thank you for this year, and especially for this year for the coin. Because coming from Charleston, I didn't, I didn't get keys. I got proclamations, I had Chatham County give me a key to the county. And I ain't never hear they have such a thing for that, okay? So to get a coin and chuck tongue, this should think mean plenty. Because some of hundred children I don't know, say we ancestor and think we should have a cap badge in Charleston. So for say say, they be free, you see? So plenty time, we be yeti about celebration of who we do. And people yeti about Charleston, yeti about Gullah Geechee, they could yeti about Gullah Jack. And they yeti about Gullah Jack, they have to know about Denmark vessel. And they yeti about Denmark vessel, they think about the lottery. So if they think about the lottery, plenty time, they still try and forget coins. So this year, got a whole lot of meaning in that, I ain't supposed to put my glasses on for see all of them yet. But that a meanings are coming to me right now. The whole in this year, is like whole in this piece of this year, the coins will be free with people. Because plenty we ancestors, same if they leave it a coin and think back on it, so that they couldn't why we out or celebrate, especially right here in this county. So this year, then we still got people that why we for whole bunny freedom, the whole bunny land. So for all the Gullah Geechee who left out just now, I've been sorry they been left out here, because y'all had half a room full of them just a few minutes ago. But this year ain't just for me, this for all of we, who we be Gullah Geechee anointing people. So I'm glad if they are every year, all these years, coming here for shout and celebrate with hundred children. But now for all the hundred children who just get to the snow, who to come here? Y'all ain't have been here tall, tall. I'm gonna speak this way so y'all get some understanding. This year, being the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Queen, the twenty-fifth anniversary of the Gullah Geechee Nation, is especially important to be celebrated in this county because I was instilled in this county on Sullivan's Island on July second, two thousand. The same place where over forty percent of all Africans enslaved in America.
...
So someone stepping foot on Sullivan's Island today might just look at the beach. They might miss the largest historical market in the state of South Carolina. It tells you about the legacy and the history. But what we don't want them to miss, if they leave there and come into the rest of the county, is we don't want them to miss us, Gullah Geechees. We don't want them to ever say, like, people often come to me in Bifford County and say, I was in Charleston already and I couldn't find any of you. So I'm thankful to this council for thinking about making sure we're seen, making sure we are heard, and making sure we are celebrated every year. It does make a difference. And so I appreciate the voting, the work you do, because I know it can be thankless. But always consider the environment, because that pains me coming up here now, seeing the infilling of the wetlands, seeing those places that were sacred being taken away. So we gotta consider that if we want to continue culture, preserving it on the, put it in the jar. And we on the way out, we're done, when we scrub that top and the amp, that thing, that thing going, and, and the jar empty. So we don't want to preserve culture, we want to continue it. And this is the place where Gullah Geechee culture planted its first seeds and got rooted, so you gotta fight for it. So I thank this county council, but as we say in the church, thinking it not robbery for all these years, to say, we see you, we hear you, we want to work with you, we want to celebrate you. So on Saturday, y'all need to come down the creek. Whether y'all come by boat, yacht, car, wherever you do, y'all need to come to Bifford County. You see, on St. Helena Island at Penn Center Saturday, the drums will sound at noon. Your group, Wanawamalang, will be down there. A group, a whole bunch of Charleston people will be down there. Come celebrate, be part of it, and so that we can go forward together with more of the sustainability and resilience of our community and our legacy. Our celebration will also culminate this year at Penn Center on August second. You all up here got full invitation packets to come to the whole celebration. I ran out of the Gullah Geechee books and brunch flyers, but I do still have the flyers for Gullah Geechee Family Day and some in the back for anybody here that wants to attend. It's open to everybody, hundred and a half a crack a deep like this year will come. You can just come with an open spirit, an open heart, and a mind to want to help us continue who we are down here, because we know we be Gullah Geechee anointing people. So thank y'all, I appreciate y'all. The Juke Joint Jam over, so you can turn that back over, councilman, you done missed that one. But, um, but you can come to the next one. But definitely be there for Family Day, and I pray to see you, my brother. I hope you come on down this year. We'll save your place, you need to come on down. All right? And thank y'all so much, and you did an excellent job.
Thank you.
She been getting better and better with the gull over the game.
That's right.
Peace, love, and blessings, y'all. Thank you so much.
All right, item four, we're gonna begin with the second reading of ordinances. Four A, Orange Hill Development Agreement.
An ordinance approving the Orange Hill Johns Island, South Carolina Development Agreement by and among Kiowa Resorts Associates LP and Charleston County, South Carolina. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading.
Four B, Z R E Z dash zero three dash two five dash zero zero one five eight, Orange Hill Plan Development.
An ordinance rezoning the real property located at forty-six, twelve River Road, Johns Island, South Carolina, parcel identification numbers two one five zero zero, zero 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 three zero, and two one five zero zero, zero zero one six three, from Orange Hill Plantation, PD eighty-three A zoning district, and parcel identification number two five six zero zero, zero zero one two zero, from the Rural Agricultural AG eight zoning district to the Orange Hill Plan Development, PD one ninety-one zoning district. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Four C, Tri-County Biological Science Center Utility Easement Transfer to the Commissioners of Public Works of the City of Charleston.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a right-of-way and utility easement to the Commissioners of Public Works of the City of Charleston, South Carolina, on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number four one two zero 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 one two, located at Leeds Avenue and Brickyard Creek Road, North Charleston, South Carolina, two nine four zero five. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
Ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Four D, Bees Ferry Landfill Construction and Utility Easement Transfer to Madison Bees Ferry Owner LLC located at one three six two Bees Ferry Road, Charleston, South Carolina.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of four construction easements and two utility easements to Madison Bees Ferry Owner LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number three zero one zero 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 two six, located at thirteen sixty-two Bees Ferry Road, Charleston, South Carolina, two nine four one four. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kabrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sass?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with nine ayes.
Just for clarity, for four F, fiscal year twenty-six budget, the second reading of the ordinance, this is only for the increase, well, for the bonus, the one-time bonus to employees, four point two million dollars for a two thousand dollar one-time bonus, and then also for the name change of the disaster relief fund to the, well, from the rainy day fund to the disaster relief, nothing else, right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
The discussion?
Let's, let's first, I just wanted to be sure that that's what we were voting on.
Is that one motion or?
Yes, and so fiscal year twenty-six budget, second reading of the ordinance, Ms. Salisbury.
An ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget ordinance, number twenty-three forty-six, to provide for the increase of Charleston County's general fund budget by appropriating an additional four million, two hundred thousand dollars for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, hereinafter referred to as fiscal year twenty twenty-six, to provide for the budgetary control of said appropriations by the county council and the county administrator and other matters related thereto.
All right, yes, Mr. Kabrowski.
I realize I'm in a minority in this, and, um, I just want to see if I can amend this to those making seventy-five thousand dollars or less to get the two thousand dollar bonus. If I can amend the motion to that.
All right, so there's already the fiscal year twenty-six budget ordinance, second reading on the table, so you're making a motion on top of the motion?
Because as I understand it, this would apply to all employees and some make close to in excess of four hundred thousand when you consider their benefits. And I just, out of time, because this comes out of fund balance and I don't think we would do this if it was our own money. And this will, um, we, we talk about next year's budget, this comes right out of fund balance and takes away from our ability to not raise taxes and our ability to lessen taxes, and it comes out to four point four million dollars if I'm correct.
So you're trying to amend the ordinance?
My preference would be no bonuses, but realize I was, I think the only vote against it, and if I'm gonna lose this, I'd like to at least make it for those who need it the most. And I would make an amendment for those making seventy-five thousand or less that would get the bonuses.
Chairman, I, I think, if, if this is a motion to amend, I'd second for discussion, because I do actually have a question on this. I might not support this in the end.
I understand.
If I can second the motion to amend for discussion.
Okay.
All right.
Properly moved and seconded for discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
No, I'm just, I have a question.
No, this is your motion. You got to amend, you got to vote on the amendment.
And then vote on the amendment.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Giles. So my understanding that the purpose behind these bonuses was because we have retention issues. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, that was the intention.
I mean, I, I am, I have to say, I'm very sensitive to Mr. Kabrowski's thinking on this. I, I think that, you know, we're, it seems like we're narrowly avoiding, you know, the potential of tax increases. I do think we sort of have an obligation to explore every possibility. I maybe disagree with him at the end here, because I do think we need to address this issue, but I think it does beg the question, where are the retention issues? If they are predominantly for employees under a certain threshold, I, I think that's a pretty reasonable amendment.
Mr. Pryor?
So we gonna pick and choose who gets what. When somebody's making seventy-six thousand, I just say seventy-five thousand, one hundred dollars, they excluded. Now, all these people put in the same time, they put in the same work, they, they, they work for all the constituents. So to say, people from seventy-five thousand on down, I mean, this was for all employees, they're all are critical, no matter what the salary, they are critical of what has been done in Charleston County. And so I will not support an amendment to just keep it to seventy-five thousand above. Everybody had to be as important, whether you make from a dollar up to two hundred thousand dollars.
dollars. You still come to work, you put in, and to punish people based on an amount, you know, based on like, if somebody's making seventy-six thousand dollars, they may be struggling just like somebody making seventy-five thousand dollars. You know, so when you do that, you hurt people who you're not intending to hurt. And so, I will not support that, it's all or nothing to me.
Mr. Darby?
I would like to get an answer to Mr. Warman's question, however, I mean, I'd like to have, I'd like to get that answer.
This county is experiencing difficulty with retention across the board. It's not just in one particular area, although there are some areas that may be more pronounced than others. The decision to pick a dollar amount to give to all employees was to scale it so that those on the lower end got a higher percentage of their pay than those that would at the top end of the scale.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than providing a cost of living adjustment where it would be a percentage that would be applied to everybody.
Mr. Giles, those persons making beyond one twenty-five, one fifty, those persons are leaving the county?
We have a retention challenge across the county, yes, sir.
Really?
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question, I guess maybe for the administrator with regard to these raises, and I'm with you, Mr. Pryor, I support this as well.
Raises, sir.
I'm sorry, the bonuses, bonuses, I'm sorry. Is there, are there evaluation tools in effect? Is this, or is this given to everybody, or if somebody has failed their last three evaluations, do they, is it to manager's discretion to give this bonus, or does it go to everybody? Or how do you, how do you manage that? But you're the administrator, let me, before you go, it's your call, and I wouldn't interrupt that, I just was curious as to what the criteria was, if maybe Mr. Thigpen, Mr. Durant, Mr. Weisand have any say-so if somebody's been failing performance evaluations, if they have any say-so in that.
If they've been performing, failing their performance evaluations, they shouldn't be considered, because they shouldn't be here, number one. Mac and I did, as he, let me reiterate, discussed, because I even mentioned the thing about the percentage as far as, and Mac, the goal is to get the lowest ones first. We are losing several folks, yes, even department heads, one recently of our second-largest department in the county left to go into the private sector to make a hundred grand more, potentially? Over that, I mean, so, yes, we are seriously trying to keep everyone here. There are criteria that are being looked at, there are dates that have been set, it's fiscal year, fiscal year, so if you came in late, or you haven't been here since it is money-based upon the previous fiscal year, the employment is based on the fiscal year.
Thank you, and again, I would defer to you, assuming this council passes it, that's your call as the administrator to administer, administer that, thank you.
All right, Mr. Boykin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Giles, this is meant to come out of fund balance for one-time purchases, that's how we generally use it, and this is not to fix the issue down the road, this is, this is for this fiscal year, and this fiscal year only, to address the shortages based on inflation or cost of living. We have to take this up for the long haul, that's going to be budgetary item for the next year, correct, sir?
Yes, sir, this was the option that we thought we had in fiscal year twenty-six.
And nothing, and nothing about this is going to change whether or not we have to raise taxes or not, because it's one-time money, and it's only going to be for this year.
That is correct, we still have the challenge next year.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kobrowski, and then Mr. Darby?
Thanks, I understand, again, and I know it'll make me unpopular in this room, but I represent the people who live in the county, who can pay taxes, I mean, the give, it is coming out of fund balance, and it's four point four million dollars, and to all the people who work hard, there is an advantage that if you're working for the county, you're making six figures, some hundreds to thousands, and you know that you're going to get paid as soon as the sun comes up and the sun sets. Most of us don't have that privilege. We have a pit in our stomach to know whether we're going to be able to meet our payrolls or pay our mortgages or buy our food, because we don't know if we're going to make it from week to week to week. We don't know if the income's going to come in, and this suggests that there's no difference. I mean, it's guaranteed every week because it's from the government, and I think, and the benefits are forty-two percent on top of the salary. And I think to say that we're going to give two thousand dollars to everybody, no matter how much they make, and you're making six figures or more, is kind of thumb in our nose, that taxpayers who don't have that privilege, and it's not monopoly money that we can give out, and it's, if it came out of our own pockets and we felt it, I think we'd feel different. We're going to reassessment, and people are going to have to pay more taxes on their homes, and some, for the amount of these bonuses, their taxes are going to go up. And I just would ask you to think not just to do something because we can with other people's money, but to feel how people out there who pay our taxes feel about this, and I feel this is the wrong thing to do, and if people are struggling, I'm willing to make an amendment if it's a hundred thousand or a hundred twenty-five thousand or below. I'd rather it go, we don't do this, but to put some limit on it and pretend there's no difference between somebody making hundreds of thousands and below that as to what this means, and somebody said, well, somebody's left to make a hundred thousand dollars more. I don't think that giving them the two thousand, one dollar bonus from other people's money is going to make the difference, just because we can do something, and we're not here to represent, we're here to represent the people who live in the county in the hundreds of thousands who pay taxes, and I would urge you not to do this, because we'll be asking people to pay, to increase their sales taxes, and then they look at this and they'll say, well, you're paying people extra bonuses with our money out of fund balance. I just urge you to consider that, and it kind of lessens our impact to ask for that when you do things like this. No disrespect to the integrity or how hard people work, but they're getting paid to do a job now. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Darby, and then Mr. Pryor.
Well, I do think across the board is better than the ten percent, I mean, one, two, or three percent increase according to salary, because those on the upper echelon have always done better than those at the bottom, so I think this would more advantageous for those who make less money. But I guess my question, Mr. Giles, is, is there something in place that if you're going to get this two thousand dollars, you're going to stay an additional year? What prevents an employee from getting two thousand dollars, and two months later, say, I'm gone, and where's the retention there? So what do we have to say that they're going to stay? Is it going to be here three more months later, six months down the road, I'm getting my two thousand dollars, I'm leaving Monday? So what guarantee do we have that they're going to stay if they were to procure the two thousand dollars? And of course, that's a generic question, that's just not for you to answer, sir, or even the administrator, but I just want to put that in focus there, because the same thing happened with some teachers across the state and whatnot, so I just want to put that question out there, sir.
Mr. Pryor?
I would hope that the majority of our employees are not looking at this meeting tonight.
Amen to that.
You know, it's disheartening for these folks, you know, during a hurricane, a natural disaster, you need a ditch clean, or, you know, you need your, you know, you need your garbage, you know, these folks work out at the landfill, and just think of these people aside, well, you know what, I'm going to just all leave, I'm not going to show up to work, I'm going to all call in sick, and your garbage start piling up. These people going to call us, okay? They're not going to worry about, well, you know, they got a bonus, they just want things done. And, you know, if you can't give them a cola, you know, with inflation is up two point seven percent, how do you expect these folks to show up to work every day with a happy fees, you know, without being a morale killer, when they can go right next door somewhere else and drive five or ten minutes over the, or, you know, over the line and make more money? And so, this isn't something that, you know, we giving away taxpayers' money, we are doing this to retain employees and to make sure that those folks that call you when the trash don't get dumped, or when the road don't get paved. I mean, we heard Mr. Thigpen during the budget process, you know, told us, he had a problem retaining engineers, a problem. I think Mr. Adams said the same thing, too, you know, these people are going, and so, I mean, you know, I liken it to when I first got on the North Charleston Sewer District, they had a heavy turnover, because people went there to get trained, and then they left to go somewhere else because they got paid more. So until they fixed that problem, they had a problem of retention, and so, we don't want to wait until all these people decide to leave and go somewhere else and then try to fix the problem. You know, this is just a stop-gap measure until we can figure out how we're going to fix this, you know, going into the next couple of years, like Mr. Boykin said. The school board had the same issue. The police departments had the same issue. You call the police department or EMS, and they tell you, well, sir, I'm sorry, it's going to be fifteen minutes versus five minutes because we are a short staff. You know, what you going to tell that constituent when it's a life and death situation? Well, I voted against giving these folks some kind of compensation to keep them on the job. To me, it just doesn't make sense, and I'm not beating on anybody, I'm just saying how I feel. When we walk into these buildings, these people respect us like, you know, I mean, like I've never seen before. And, you know, I'm not going to let them down, so I hope the rest of this council don't let them down either.
Mr. Darby, and then Mr. Warman?
I guess I'm off after this, I think. I think it's a matter of semantics, I would hope that in the future, that when we do this, that we would do it for merit or excellent work as opposed to retention. I think we want to provide employees with two thousand dollars, thank you for the great work that you're doing, as opposed to, I'm going to give you two thousand dollars to stay. It just doesn't look good to me that way, so that's just me, sir.
And then Mr. Moody?
No, I mean, I, I'm sorry to have slowed everything down, I appreciate the discussion, I think it was helpful, frankly, I mean, I think knowing that, you know, that there was some thought put into the sort of percentage component of it, I'm sorry, I had forgotten there was some discussion of the engineers, and that makes me feel more comfortable with it. I guess I just don't, I'm certainly not trying to hurt anybody either, Mr. Pryor, I'm not trying to degrade our employees or anything like that, but I, there is still a part of me that's a little bit uncomfortable that we're talking about, you know, a tricky budget situation next year, and, you know, if we could, you know, impact that by a four point four billion, or not a billion, gosh, we could impact that by four point four million dollars, I don't think that's insignificant, but I, again, recognize that if we have a mass exodus from the county, that's going to create a whole host of other problems, including budgetary. So, I'm convinced, I can support, you know, as-is, I'll withdraw my second if we need to do that.
All right, Mr. Moody, and then Mr. Pryor.
And then, I tell you, I got, Mr. Darby got dialed in with the legal last week, I'm dialed in with you today, I think you gave the administrator a good idea, in my industry, if you have bonuses, there are callbacks, there's things like that, but again, I would leave it to the administrator to stipulate that you got to, you know, stay here for three months or six months or whatever, whatever he wants to do, that's his call, but you gave him something to think about. But I guess, I guess I would address Mr. Kobrowski by, you know, this, I'm this only one looking out for the taxpayers nonsense, it's just, you know, this county's had a triple-A rating for over a decade, it hasn't had a millage increase for over a decade, it is fiscally prudent, and to say that you've come along and do this is just nonsense, because we've been watching our pocketbook forever, as long as I've been here. But the fact of the matter is, you have people that go to the convenience centers up and on and on and yell about they have to show their ID to get into the place. Well, what if we don't have even people to staff all day? Think what the calls you're going to get then? So, you know, this, this idea that you're some kind of fiscal savior of the county just doesn't, it's just insulting. It just is, and so, I, I've just, I've heard it too many times. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Pryor, and then Mr. Kobrowski.
And I'm going to just make an analysis, so, the four point two million dollars are four point four, it came from money that we already had because of our fiscal responsibility. So, the staff says, instead of raising the mills, are holding back on the reduction that they were going to get on the reassessment, you know, four point two mills, that's almost ten million dollars a year for eternity. So what we are saying is, give us a chance to look into those numbers, but don't punish our employees, because if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't have got that kind of money. And our staff that saved that, so we not taking anything away from them, you know, and these same people pay taxes, too. Our staff pay taxes, too, they pay the same thing in the grocery store, you and I, anybody else pay. So, I mean, it's not like these people are freeloaders, I never call them freeloaders because they are hard-working individuals. I've been out with them, I've been out there with them, from the sheriff's department and the party works department to the, you know, upper-level management, you know, I've seen these people work. The EEOC center doing a hurricane, these folks work tirelessly until the job is done. I've seen it in my twenty-two years of being here, and so, that's why, you know, it's one thing to tell your wife you love her every day you come on, but if you don't show it to her or bring something, she's going to doubt you sooner or later, so, you know, love is an action word, and I love these employees, and I think we got the best in the world. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Question? Mr. Sasse, and then we will call for the question, if Mr. Sasse wishes to say anything.
I'm good, I think we've made the right decision, I'm willing to do what we already decided to do, thank you, sir.
All right, this is the question of the amendment, unless Mr. Warman?
No, I withdrew the second.
Okay, so you withdrew the second, so let's go back to the original motion, or the original ordinance, the second reading, roll call, vote.
Okay, before I call the roll, can I make sure it's four point two million dollars? I heard during the discussion, four point four, I just, the ordinance said four point two, okay. All right, Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kobrowski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Yes.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Warman?
Aye.
Chairman Middleton?
Aye.
The ordinance passes second reading with eight ayes and one nay.
All right, we have item five, committee.
Five, E through C.
Probably moved and seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposers, nay, let us hear the first reading.
Yes, sir, an ordinance approving and authorizing the grant of a non-exclusive perpetual easement to RCRM Family Limited Partnership on a portion of county property identified as tax map parcel number three nine three zero 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 three at locate, I'm sorry, this has a typo, located at eight zero nine nine Palmetto Commerce Parkway, North Charleston, South Carolina. And then, an ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the town of Maggot to the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Charleston County. And finally, an ordinance approving and accepting the complete transfer of authority to conduct municipal elections for the town of Hollywood to the Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Charleston County.
Thank you so much, consent agenda?
Eight to K. Second.
And seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay, the ayes have it, item seven, seven A, Savannah Highway capacity.
Approval, seven A through D.
All right, properly moved and seconded, Mr. Kobrowski.
Well, you went pretty fast on the six, I'm a no on six E.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Kobrowski is a no on six E. Item seven A through D or E?
D and dog.
All right, seven A through D, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposers, nay?
I got a question on seventy, Madam, this is what we discussed the last time.
Yes, sir.
Authorized you to go, you know.
He said seven D, this right that we voted on, so we haven't voted on seven E yet.
No.
I'm asking a question, so this is.
On seven E, he's asking a question on seven E now.
Yes, so that's what we authorized you to do, to go and, you know, try to work this out, and then come back to fix it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I wanted.
Move for committee recommendation, probably moved and seconded, seven E, all those in favor, oh, Mr. Kobrowski, yes.
I just want to say that I looked at the videos that, of the board of zoning meetings, and I found them honorable, I found them orderly, and I found them no less confusing or contradicting than our own meetings, and manned by people just as good as any one of us sitting up here, and they've been unanimous, and I just, again, part of this discussion, I find it no more contradictory than any of the decisions we've made here. So I would just, again, as I understand, we're voting to override what they've done, or defer, what is it that we're voting on now?
You can ask the clerk for the motion.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Madam Clerk?
Um, that council grant the request, grant the requested historic certificate as discussed in executive session?
Okay, well, discussion now, I would strongly oppose that motion, I, I looked at, again, at the, at the hearings that you gave us the video of, and I feel we should respect that we, each of those commissioners are appointed by us, and I found the meeting, and I found no contradictions, or no vagueness in what they've done, and it's, it's the preserve the integrity of those communities, that's what they want, that's what the commission was founded for, and I urge that we follow what the people we appointed this task to do, just to continuously ignore them, now we've all had the opportunity to look at those meetings, they're no different than our meetings, more orderly and sometimes, and less contradictory, I would say, I didn't see anything untoward in them, thank you.
Mr. Chair, conference. Question. All right, thank you so much, yes, Mr. Pryor.
Good luck in litigating, when you asked counsel not to speak about strategies in executive session, and then Mr. Kowalski comes out, and does just the opposite of what you asked, so, good luck.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Boykin, for calling for the question, let us now have a roll call vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
I'm not sure what I'm voting on.
You're voting on the committee recommendation, which is that council grant the requested historic certificate as discussed in executive session at Thursday's finance committee.
Aye.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
Aye.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with eight ayes and one nay.
Item seven F?
Move to approve.
Second.
Probably moved and seconded.
Call the question.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Boykin?
Aye.
Mr. Darby?
Nay.
Mrs. Honeycutt?
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Aye.
Mr. Pryor?
No.
Mr. Sasse?
Aye.
Mr. Werman?
Aye.
Mr. Middleton?
Aye.
The motion passes with one, two, three, seven ayes and two nays.
All right, thank you so very much, we are now ready for council comments, I think we've had a lot to say tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I do not mean to interrupt, but my flight is about to take off from the Charleston Airport.
Yes, Ms. Honeycutt, please, if you would give your comments, and thank you so much for being patient.
Yes, thank you so much for indulging me, and again, for council undertaking the opportunities to allow council members to participate when doing council responsibilities away, so, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you. Madam Attorney, I know that you have to leave, do you have any, any comment that you wish to make prior to leaving?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you so much, and you are excused.
Thank you.
Mr. Werman? Mr. Werman?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Johnson, I'd like to talk with Mr. Johnson after the meeting, about some of the Elbit issues that we've been over before, but I'd like to revisit.
All right, Mr. Boykin?
None for me, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pryor.
I'm going to pass tonight, but, well, staff, and, and, and Mr. Tooten, you and all your staff, and everybody, keep up the good work, we love you and we support you.
Mr. Moody?
Yes, sir, a couple. Yeah, I got a couple of things, thank y'all for letting me tune in last week, kind of all over the place, but I wanted to comment on the public hearing we heard about that boat, boat storage, well, that was done right, you know, we had an applicant, and we've had that before, the applicant went to the community, listened, they made some changes, and then the community came out and said, we're, we like it, we support it, let's go forward, that's, that's a, that's a blueprint, Joel, of how these things hopefully should go down, as we, as we move all the way. Also wanted to thank this council for six F, that abandoned item on 20, abandoned building on 2117 Ash River Road, this has been a really good partnership with Representative Brewer, Merle's been involved in that, Joel, this is that old dry cleaning, Chairman Middleton, you and I drive by all the time, that gets that, that building, that historic, or abandoned certification, so that's a, that's a big deal for infill development, I think that for the most part, we, we all support. On the resolution, I had a few things to point out, that, you know, Charleston County Transportation Committee is appointed by our legislative delegation, they don't take an oath, Charleston Dorchester Mental Health Board, appointed by the legislative delegation, does not take an oath, Charleston County Foster Care does not take an oath, Veterans Affairs does not take an oath, but they did take the point for the Charleston County Board and Voters Registration Elections to lay out a very good process, they take an oath, the clerk of court keeps the record, it's a very defined process, very easily done and replicated, I would think, so, and we addressed this issue back in the spring, I think all of us said, we, we're ready to take the oath, our sta, our committees probably are, but there's 46 counties, how many towns?
317.
317 towns, municipalities, boy, wouldn't it be nice if we were all uniform, everybody did the same thing? We asked our legislative delegation to drive that, they didn't, they failed, they didn't try, so this is a state law, it's a state-down, top-down failure on their behalf, if we agree this is a state law, then why don't this supermajority legislature take it up and get it passed? That's all we asked for. Statewide rules for everybody, the legislature doesn't want to touch it, clearly, they stripped down the budget proviso that was inserted, Secretary of State doesn't want to touch it, our delegation doesn't want to touch it, I just listed off many of these boards and commissions, they're out here forming packs about oaths, and they don't even force oaths on their own committees they report, they, they appoint, so we got to lead, and we did, so, it's just, it's amazing that, you know. Talk, 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 sign resolution, hold a press conference, you know what, go lead, go do something, and they didn't, so we did, and I thank this council for that, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sasse?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Moody, I couldn't, I couldn't agree with you more, this is a great opportunity for Charleston County, we're going to, our clerk is going to be training in all, training all these boards, and we can do the oath at the same time, perfect opportunity to work together and get this done, and I want to thank everybody for their help to get this done, thank y'all very much.
Mr. Darby?
I thought it was in Philadelphia again, sir, but you adopted me, so you went overlooked me, sir, so I'm good, that was a joke, sir.
Thank you so much, I, I do acknowledge my darkness.
Yes, sir.
And I cannot run from it.
Come on with it, sir.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kowalski?
Several things, I noticed that the, you can tell a lot about a person, or how, what respect they have, and the whole group that left during our, our prayer ceremony, I thought spoke volumes.
It's true.
Believe why people are doing a prayer, shows contempt for those who are doing it, and I've heard about Elbit, and I just want to say that, in response, that I'm glad to be on a, I'm allowed to be in a council, when I see things like that, what they're saying, it's the same expressions that they use when the people have been murdered at Jewish museums, or, or marches, and the, the time when Jewish people can be murdered, their children beheaded, their women raped, their men killed, and it's a time when they now have arms to defend themselves, you know, and even though I'm probably the only one here who may not have voted to give them the tax break, because I voted against every tax break like that, on this one, I probably would give it to them, because I wouldn't want to give in to those, and in my mind, I'm triggered when I see that, and I hear that, it's no different to me than hearing, that others may hear the Ku Klux Klan or Nazis, I didn't hear one sign of remorse about the women raped, the babies beheaded, and the men killed, nothing, and the loss of any life is, is horrible, but there's a simple process, that they gave up the hostages, it was nothing, you have to complete a war till it's done, like we did with Nazi Germany, and I just would say that the, in terms of the Highway 41 thing, we were given, and I was very disappointed that it wasn't sent 483 letters in opposition to building the, a road through Laurel Hill Park, and I've only been here three years almost, but people have been here a lot longer, I don't know of any other issue where we had 483 individual letters in opposition of something, and I just want to, again, say that, to say that the road is only going to go through, and it's like a white line on the road, is a falsehood demonstrably, and to say that, and we had the maps, that it takes a 10-acre chunk out, and most of it, or a lot of it is 50 yards in, that's half a football field, and the people, and there's very few green areas there, I know it's a complicated issue, but when, again, when nine members of a town council come to us on something, and the mayor uniformly, that's something that we need to listen to, if we ignored at our own peril, and in terms of the historic preservation commissions, that, that speaking generally, and they make their decisions, and I'm glad we passed the oath tonight, but the, to say it's consistent, and not done because of political pressure, but, I mean, I, I've seen many things, I'm glad we got this done, but enough said on that, and, I'm glad we got that done and behind us, thank you.
Mr. Administrator?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
Mr. Pryor, you mentioned that you've been here 22 years.
This coming, yeah, January will be 22 years.
Twenty-two years.
Me and Mr. Darby.
And Mr. Darby, and we celebrate that, I would remember many conversations I would have with my, my friend, Mr. Swears, when I sat in the seat where Mr. Moody is now sitting, and Mr. Swears was sitting in the seat where Mr. Boykin is, and Mr. Swears admonished me, don't stay too long.
That's right.
Because sometimes you can miss the window, and I've been thinking about that for myself, very, very, very astutely, and since we're in the political, now, I'm not up for reelection at this point, but those words were ringing in my mind, and as I see that we're in a political season, it certainly hastens the day.
Yep, national politics.